Hi, guys. We're going to get started. I'd like to call to order our March 8th Committee of the whole meeting. If we can start off with a roll call.
Mr. Updugrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
All present.
Stand for a pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please. Okay, welcome everyone tonight. There wasn't a previous executive session that's going to lead us to our public comment period number one. I believe we have Ms. Yu Savage has signed up, but is she here? Okay, let me read the disclaimer real quick and then we'll move forward. Okay, on behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us in making recommendations and decisions related to Boyertown Area School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASH Board Policy 006. This document is available at this meeting and on the VASD website. Participants properly registered on the sign-up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by the announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if that is appropriate. All statements, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of the public meeting if you have a concern about an individual, staff member, or student. If your public comment includes a question, Ms. Torsia or a member of her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. So we do have Ms. Yu Savage up and then Barbara Furman would speak next. Thank you, Donna.
Hi, Donna Yu Savage, Upper Fronter Township. I'm glad to see that there will be a presentation from the three-person ad hoc committee to the whole board prior to the vote regarding the decennial census analysis regarding our three voting regions. I'm here to say that things that probably won't be said in that presentation because the community and the board should know about the committee's lack of communication and transparency. To start, the board president appointed Ruth Dieroff to serve as this committee's chairperson. She's the sole person who voted against equalizing our regions 10 years ago and then proceeded to get her cronies to fight the decision of the board and the community in court and won. She is persistent, I'll say that, even at legal expense to the district, that is, our tax dollars. This chairperson set up the first meeting in the mid-afternoon purportedly so that people who didn't like to drive at night could attend. She proceeded to set the second meeting for mid-afternoon as well, even after seeing no seniors in the audience and getting requests from the community to make the meetings at more convenient times for working people. This chairperson did nothing to educate her two committee members.
Excuse me, you're not allowed to talk about individual board members during this comment period.
Oh, okay, I'm just referring to chairperson.
Now, you mentioned her name earlier.
Okay, I won't again. This chairperson did nothing to educate her two other committee members about the purposes of the committee and the requirements for modifying the regions. As a result, they embarrassed themselves and were not able to contribute to the committee, instead just blindly following along. This chairperson did not plan for recording the meetings or capturing minutes. As a result, the meetings were audio-recorded in a way that was impossible to follow. This chairperson posted information about the committee and sought public input only after much public pressure, but the information posted was incomprehensive and flat-out incorrect. The webpage states that no sitting board members are impacted by the recommendation. This is incorrect. Mr. Updugrove's seat will move to a different voting region. This chairperson flat-out ignored the public input that was received. She quickly dismissed any discussion about replacing the three regions with an at-large election, even though the community has been asking about this for over 30 years. And she received another three-region scenario from Joe Picione that satisfied her most important criteria to keep one region all Burks, but never convened the committee to discuss it. I've spoken previously about the thorough process and the involvement of the committee in this exercise 10 years ago. This committee's work has been very poorly implemented in comparison. 10 years ago, we recommended the community's recommendation.
30 seconds.
This committee is recommending the chairperson's recommendation, which splits Boyertown Borough, a tight-knit committee across two voting regions. Shame, shame, shame. It would be in our community's best interest for the board to vote against this recommendation and reform the committee with a competent leader to gather public input authentically and come up with a recommendation that reflects the community's wishes. Alternatively, it doesn't take many petition signatures for the community to intervene in the court proceedings. Thank you.
Barbara Furman.
Barb Furman, New Hanover Township, Gilbertsville. It is hard to speak on policies that we haven't heard you have a discussion on. At what point are we going to let the community engage in discussions? We are here in this time because policies have been implemented that the citizens and the taxpayers that vote and parents and taxpayers don't agree. It is not about being agreeable with each other, it is about the ability to discuss and debate. The school board does not work separately from we, the people. Just thinking. I pray for a spirit of unity that welcomes parental choice and the public, the public discussion on everything from budget to policy. We have reached out to Arnold's Family Fund and we have gotten a date together for anybody who's interested in the community to take their children, toddlers to adults, and we have a discount, you get a little, a few more points to have fun with your family and to unify as a community. So, we have lots of them, so if anybody's interested, get this for your family and friends. Thank you.
I'd like to move on, move on to approval of the February 22nd School Boards Director Meeting Minutes.
Hogan moves.
Dieroff second.
Any questions or discussion? Go to a vote.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, I believe we're going to hand the mic over to Ms. Danicola for our finance budget update.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to review the 2022-23 preliminary expenditures and also lay out the next steps in our 2022-23 budget process. As a review, our 2023 budget is subject to the Act One Index. The Act One Index for the school district was 4.2%. I'm going to review the key factors affecting our budget, review the preliminary expenditures as they sit today for 2022-23, and lay out our next budgetary steps and the 2022-23 budget timeline. To review the Act One Index, Boyertown's adjusted index for the 2022-23 budget years, 4.2%, you will see that's an increase from the prior-year index of 3.7%. And you can see the history of the index from a point of 2.1% in 2012-13 up to 4.2% for 2022-23. You will remember that the board did approve a resolution agreeing not to raise taxes above the index of 4.2%. So in any budget that we present for 2022-23, it cannot include real estate tax increase above the 4.2%. The key cost drivers of the district remain the same as prior years. Our largest costs are our personnel salaries and benefits, followed by charter school costs, mandated services such as transportation, and then facility operations, keeping all our buildings up and running. The preliminary expenditures for salary and benefits is estimated at $90,383,833. That's roughly $3.6 million increase over the prior year. That increase relates to salary increases that are contractually bound, PESR's-related increases, and healthcare cost increases. The PESR's rate for 2022-23 is 35.26%. Contracted and purchased services, that includes services through IU, placements of special-ed students, our transportation, it includes charter school costs, a myriad of purchase services that go into the budget. 2022-23 estimate is $32,106,771, to roughly a $2 million increase over the current year. This increase is due to just an overall increase in the cost of services and the amount of services that our students require. In addition, we have budgeted a significant increase in fuel costs related to our student transportation. Our supply costs are budgeted at $5,897,977, roughly $1.2 million increase from the current year. This is related to additional supplies needed. It also includes our energy costs. The Pennsylvania Department of Education accounting rules consider utility costs as a supply, so that would include our fuel, oil, our gas, everything we need for our buildings. We have seen an uptick in those costs as well, and that is included in our 2022-23 budget estimate. The property debt service and fund transfers, that's everything we spend on our bond obligations plus anything we would set aside for capital reserve for future capital plans or purchases of property. The 2022-23 estimate is $8,136,085. It's a decrease of 1.1 million from the 21-22 budget, and that's mainly due to a budgeted decrease in the amount that we will contribute to capital reserve. So overall, we're looking at an increase from the 2021-22 budget of $5,760,47 in our expenditures. The next budgetary steps in our process, as administration did in the prior year, we will continue to evaluate expenditure savings potential. We do go line by line and look at each expenditure and evaluate those items that we can save costs on. That includes looking at personnel, it includes looking at all of our benefits, and evaluating what our costs will be for 2022-23 and trying to identify additional savings before we get to that final budget on June 30th. We will continue to evaluate charter school costs. We did see a quite significant decrease in the number of students in external charter schools and more enrollment in our own virtual academy. We are encouraged by that and hope to see more of those external charter school students either come to BOL or return to our buildings. Healthcare costs included in our preliminary numbers for healthcare is a significant increase in our healthcare spend due to a number of increased claims that we have experienced, a number of large-dollar claims we have experienced. We will continue to evaluate those costs through June, and should we start to trend in a more positive fashion, we will update our budget numbers to reflect that. I will tell you from a healthcare perspective, we did enter the consortium last year. In this first year, as of this point, what the actuaries have projected is had we been on our own, we would be $2 million higher. So as you remember, in the consortium, we have overall protection on our maximum spend. That overall protection is saving us roughly $2 million. So the consortium is, while all healthcare costs are increasing, is limiting the amount of our increase. The other items that we will focus on is our revenue evaluation. The governor did release education funding numbers that were pretty significant, had a pretty significant $2.5 million increase to the district. We will continue to watch what happens at the state level in Harrisburg to see whether or not those funds will come to fruition. So we will, you know, conservatively budget those state funding numbers, but we will continue to keep an eye on what Harrisburg is doing in that realm. And then additionally, we're going to evaluate all our available revenue sources, and that does include what we can generate from a local level as far as real estate taxes. But again, our focus is going to be to look at our expenditures and try to determine expenditures that we can decrease without disrupting programs. Our budgetary goals are to maintain our educational offerings, increase our enrollment within our own cyber program, or bring some of the external cyber students back into our buildings, explore options for better serving the needs of our students. We will be focused on facility planning. We know that we have some deferred maintenance items across our district in our buildings. We'll begin looking at those to formulate a plan that we can sustain our buildings going forward, and we will always look for a way to spend within the means our community can support. As I stated earlier, on January 27th, the district adopted the Act One Resolution agreeing not to raise taxes above the index. Again, that means we cannot raise taxes above the 4.2%. By May 31st, we will adopt a proposed final budget, and then by June 30th, we will adopt our final budget. We will have many meetings going forward focused on finance and the budget. If possible, we will keep those meetings scheduled on committee and board meeting nights so that we can, you know, just keep the process moving, but you will likely see at least two meetings a month, if not more. That's the preliminary look at '22-23. I will, you know, let you know that we are hoping to see a downtick in healthcare, that we can, you know, adjust that number down. That's just on the medical and RX side, over almost $15 million of our budget. So anything we can experience in a downturn in claims from an actuarial perspective and we can drive that number down will be helpful.
I was going to say, if we have any questions, I'm sure this is going to be the start of many, many, many conversations of, in general, I mean, this is sort of just a general outlook of what's to come. So I had Lisa and then Mr. Updugrove.
Thanks, Mr. Hemingway. I just have a quick question. I was actually going to email this, but since you had brought it up. I was just curious, because I know we have a contract for transportation, but do we pay the fuel costs separate from that, or is it just like if they go over a certain?
We do pay the fuel cost.
Okay.
We do.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We do also go out with the IU districts as a consortium, as a group, for our fuel that is currently out to bid, that we're evaluating as a group, when to lock in, where to lock in, as we know that the fuel market is ever fluctuating.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, did I hear a federal, what we were going to get from the feds?
The money from the federal that we get is all grant-related, so that would be our Title I funds or Title II, Title III. What I talked about was the state funding, the governor's amounts. He has projected additional basic education funding of almost $2.5 million for Boyertown. But as, you know, we've seen in Harrisburg and as we've heard the dialogue going on, it seems unlikely that we will experience that increase. So we will be watching Harrisburg closely to see where those discussions are going, where the state's revenue streams come in, to see what they can support for education.
Do you know what we got last year from the fed?
I could look that number up. I think roughly our Title I was just under $800,000. In Title II, we had about $158,000. That doesn't include all the ESSR funds.
Okay, so we'll be able to apply for them again?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Danicola. All right, next, we're going to hear from Ms. Dieroff. I actually appointed Ms. Dieroff to be the committee chairman, along with Mr. Zawada and Mr. Brophy. They consisted of this ad hoc committee for our dicentennial census data. So Ms. Dieroff, the floor is yours.
Okay, I don't have the... I can't seem to locate the statement here. There's nothing online, so... Yes, that would be good. Just the part that we're going to be, you don't have to put the whole thing up, just a section that we're going to be approving tonight. Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Everything that we discussed was on the website. Contrary to statements that were made, we did look at this very carefully, and there is no sitting board members affected. I just want to make that perfectly clear. We then gave the information to the solicitor, who had to write everything up that we have to present and has to be presented to the court. We did have other, besides Mrs. Yu Savage's schedule, she gave us what she was recommending. We had one other one, and it was Joe Piscione, is that how you pronounce it? Which we also put on the website. I had one other email that was sent to me by a constituent that wanted everything at large. However, he said he knew that wasn't possible. See, he would vote on, I think his exact words were, Mrs. Yu Savage's plan. Taking all that into consideration, we still felt this was the best plan that we had. So tonight, I'm asking the board to approve the plan that the committee set forth, the ad hoc committee, and we're recommending the following action of the school board of directors. A motion to authorize the district solicitor, Fox Rothschild, LLP, to file a petition in the Court of Common Pleas of Burks County to approve the proposed redistricting of Precinct One in Douglas Township, Montgomery County, from Region Three to Region Two, and move Boyertown Precinct One to Region One, and to further authorize and adopt these findings and recommendations of the ad hoc committee supporting the findings of that petition, as well as any and all other actions that are necessary in order to comply with Board Policy 001 and the actions of the ad hoc committee. So I'm looking for a motion for that.
Brophy motions.
Zawada seconds.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Brophy, a second from Mr. Zawada.
Is there any discussion?
Questions, comments?
Go ahead.
So when I looked this over, I, and just correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that there was a seat moving from Region Three that would now be in Two.
No, we're talking sitting board members. This will get filed in court. This won't take effect till next year, till next election, and there will be no sitting board members affected.
I understand what you're saying. Okay. I understand what you're saying.
It was one of the criterias that we had to go by.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Nyman?
Mr. Sultana, can you explain to us as a board and to the public exactly what the law states we have to do?
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Pennsylvania has a doctrine that uses a very sexist term, one man, one vote. We now say one person, one vote. The purpose of that is when you have election regions, that you need to be as equal as possible in terms of, when you vote, that your vote isn't weighted any less because you live in a region where you have fewer representatives. So, in a, on a statewide basis, you may have heard that there's a lot of attention going on right now in terms of election districts and where people will be voting for your elected representatives. It's based on the same constitutional principle that individuals need to be as balanced as possible in their area so that if I live in one area versus another, I'm going to have one representative for my cohort of individuals that I live with locally. Similarly, in the case of the Boyertown School District, we have three regions, and we have a possibility, as indicated, we could go all at large, but if we maintain a regional basis, then if I live in Region One, there should be as close as possible the same number of people who are voting as those in Region Two or Three, or it will get out of balance. Now, the way we know these numbers is associated with the decennial census, which comes out every 10 years, and the census results just came out. A number of years ago, we did have litigation in the Burks County Court of Common Pleas raising this issue and the equality of balance between the regions. As part of the resolution of that litigation, we had agreed, or previous board had agreed to every 10 years, look at this situation to see if that balance remains. That board was willing to agree to that because theoretically, every 10 years, we should be looking at this issue anyway to be sure that it is in balance or out of imbalance. Because if it is not in balance, a group of resident electors could also challenge and say, "I live in Region X, and I don't have the same equality in voting in my region versus another." So, instead of allowing that enforcement mechanism, we had agreed, as a previous board, to address this every 10 years under the circumstances. There were previous attempts on the part of this board to go on a combination of regional or at-large, or at-large, and there's all kinds of issues that we could spend talking about the pros and cons of going that route. It is my understanding that the recommendations of the committee took a more micro view instead of disrupting the regional plan, which the court did not like. I guess it's 10 years ago when this issue arose, the last time that we were trying to go away from the regional basis and try to limit the impact of the changes to the extent possible. And in this case, I think we're just moving, was it, how many precincts we're moving? Just one?
Two.
Two precincts from one region to another to achieve balance. And candidly, the numbers come up pretty closely in terms of achieving balance, again, within the regions. The numbers are, if you can see, the current method is, there's a, in Region One, it's 14,764, ranging on the low end to Region Three, which has 18,789. What this does do is actually get Region One to 17,024 individuals. What this does do is actually get Region 1 to 17,024 individuals, and Region 3 to 16,676 individuals, and Region 2, 16,259. That's fairly close. Now, are there possibilities of other parameters? I suppose there are. I haven't gone and looked at that, but the committee looked at that, and this does not appear to me to be highly disruptive to the voting patterns in the district. And if you can look at the percentages, getting it at 34, 33, and 33% appears to be a fairly decent effort. The court's going to look at this and agree to that or disagree with the issue, but in the absence of an alternative plan and the like, the court will be theoretically bound to approve this if this meets, in the court's view, constitutional balance. And based upon the case law, which I will not bore you with, 33% to 34% appears to be very close in terms of achieving constitutional balance. We run the risk, obviously, if the current method remains between 29% and 38%, that deviation is probably too far, and if challenged, we would face an issue anyway. So status quo, in my opinion, from the board's perspective, is not an option. So we have to do something. The question is whether or not the committee's work solves the issue. I can tell you legally, looking at the percentages that are there, it solves the issue. And that's why you pointed a committee to look into those issues, and it's ultimately up to the board as to whether or not you're going to approve or disapprove that for fixing those lines. And as you know, if you read the newspapers about what's going on with respect to our congressional and other redistricting issues, this is always an issue. Now, there, unlike Boyertown, there are much more political and other consequences to this issue. And since the plan will only impact the next election in question, it really doesn't impact any seated members. Obviously, if Mr. Updegrove were to run again at that time, he will be, I believe, eligible to run, but he will have a different cohort of individuals who would be voting under the circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think we all needed to hear that.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
And you woke me up. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zawada?
I just want to say, we did spend a lot of time on this, and we were trying not to affect anybody. As everybody realizes, New Hanover has just grown tremendously. And given what we were charged with, the idea is to make it equal. I would have loved to say, okay, we could add another precinct, you know, voting precinct or taking a precinct, you know, actually added more areas to vote, but it wasn't in our power to do that. So the way we came about this is just tried to go strictly by the numbers. There was a lot, a lot of research done by Mrs. Dieroff. She is the most experienced person on this committee, and she's familiar with it from doing it before. So I know Jim and I both felt very comfortable with her research, but we did our own. We listened to the other people that spoke and brought out. The at-large, just if this was statewide, like Florida, where they just have a school board, they just have an education committee that runs the whole state, yeah, you could do an at-large. But to do at-large the size of Boyertown School District, which is 100 square miles, and we all know that this position is a position of love because we don't get paid for it, but the cost of being to run an election would just be staggering if you were running at-large, and I think it would have turned a lot of people off, and we would not maybe attract good people for the board. So these are some of the reasons why these numbers came to be, and we definitely wanted to go with Mr. Sultanic, let him review it first, so we don't leave the... Hopefully leave the school district out there where we're worried about lawsuits or anything like that. So hopefully, everybody can accept this and vote for it.
Mr. Updegrove?
I understand I'm losing like 2,000 houses on the deal, but then again, there's... The two other regions are picking up, you know, so it was a... You know, when we ran, it was a haul. You don't realize how many houses are in until you start going through the developments on one on top of another. I know. That's it. I vote for it.
Okay, let's go to a vote.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and thank you much, committee.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's going to bring us to discussion information on some policies. Ms. Torsh, you take over.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Tonight, I would like to bring to the board some discussion on the following 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 policies, which the background information will share with you, but I will review it again. Under Policy 004 Membership, this policy is one of the board policies, and it has been updated to reflect, in addition to the previous school director training requirements from Act 55 of 2017, the new amendments to Section 328 of the Pennsylvania School Code that now require training on trauma-informed approaches. So this is the first election cycle since Act 55 of 2017 and Act 18 of 2019 implemented the school director training requirements. I will also be recommending removing the last part of the current policy, which is requiring board members to have on file all mandatory clearances that district employees must have per Policy 916. We are removing this requirement upon consultation with our solicitor's office. This is not something that's embedded in other school district policies under membership. If you would choose to at any time be a volunteer, we would ask that you follow the criteria in Policy 916 to be a policy or to be a volunteer in our schools. So that would be something that we would be looking to change. The biggest thing, again, is about the trauma-informed training, and I know that one of our board members did participate in that, but in order for everyone to be brought up to speed on that approach, we will be offering a presentation by our counseling coordinator. She may only be hearing about this the first time right now, but... And her team, but it is something that we have been discussing, that we believe that, you know, obviously, in compliance with this policy, that, you know, is necessary regardless of the policy. Next that I will be proposing... I'm sorry, is everyone comfortable with Policy 004, moving to a first reading at our next board meeting, which would be the March... Yeah, I don't have my dates in front of me. I don't want to guess. 24th, 22nd? I think it's the 22nd, yeah. Okay. So the next policy that we will... That I would like to discuss tonight is Policy 137.1. It is extracurricular participation by home education students. This policy has been updated to reflect amendments based on the National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 2020 regarding home education students being permitted to join the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, the JROTC unit of a school entity in whose enrollment area the student resides. Home education students participating in a school entity's JROTC unit shall count toward the minimum number of students necessary for the continuing maintenance of this unit. This is this policy. Policy 137.1 is recommended for legal liability purposes. We do allow our home schooled students to participate in many of our extracurriculars, and this is one that would definitely help our numbers. During the last two years, we did see a decline in the JROTC, which would have really impacted on the ability to continue moving forward with this program. Since this past year, our numbers have become a little bit more robust, so our program is not in jeopardy of going away, but, you know, having students who might be at home learning and choosing to want to join our JROTC, it does support their participation. So I would be recommending that all of you support this and allow me to push to a first reading in two weeks. Okay. Next policy is Policy 150, Title I Comparability of Services. This policy is required for school entities receiving Title I funding and is a new policy for the district. I'm not sure why administration had not adopted this policy in the past, since we have been receiving Title I funds for probably as long as Title I funds have been out there to be received by Boyertown. So I'm recommending this policy just to make sure that we have it in the event that we do have an audit within our federal programs, that they, you know, know that we are following the comparability responsibilities associated with this grant. This one's kind of a no-brainer, so, okay. And next is Policy 800.1, and that's electronic signature records. This is a new policy, and it's been developed in response to member inquiries due to the increased use of electronic signatures and records for school business purposes. The policy outlines guidelines for the use of acceptance of electronic signatures and records in connection with school entity programs and operations, as well as electronic record-keeping requirements for compliance with state and federal laws and regulations and the school entity's record management plan. Policy 800.1 is recommended for auditing purposes if the school entity uses electronic signatures. And as you can only imagine, over the last almost two years, we have been using a lot of electronic signatures, and this, you know, really just goes ahead and protects the school district when it comes to our books being audited. So if there's no opposition, we'll move this one forward to the first reading as well. And then the last policy is Policy 916. Volunteers and additional updates were made to this policy to reflect a discrimination prohibition statement reference... I'm sorry, statement. There's a discrimination statement in this new policy, and there is also reference to Policy 805 regarding training, as well as reference to Policy 113.4 regarding confidentiality of special education records. So again, just, you know, recommending this policy be moved because it is updating and recognizing the change in language in the policy. And those are the five that I have to present and would ask to be able to move to first reading in two weeks.
One question.
Sure.
With the first policy, the 004.
Yes.
What would we have to gain by getting rid of the clearances?
Well, it doesn't have to be there. We're probably... From the feedback that I've gotten from our solicitor's office, we are one of the only school districts that has that there as an attachment. It's not a mandatory responsibility to have these clearances in order to hold your seat. It's not something you have to have. It's really just an extra step for board members to have to comply with and make sure that they're keeping them up to date.
Yeah.
We don't have one-on-one contact with students.
Right. You would not... Unless you're working in a capacity somewhere else as a volunteer, you would be required to have that, but as your role, you're sitting here, and we might have students sitting in, you know, next to you as our reps, but wouldn't require you to have your clearances.
I get that. My thought process would be, if someone can't get those clearances, they don't belong on the board.
And it's not about... I'm not looking at it from that at all, no. It's just really about the scrutiny and making, you know, why do you have to have it? It's not a... It was an add-on from somewhere else.
I agree 100% with what he's saying. They don't belong on the board if they can't get clearances.
We can keep that statement there.
Well, the practical issue is, let's assume for a moment we do have a board member who does not have the clearances or can't get an acceptable clearance. We don't have any basis to oust the board member. That's the difficulty. The only way you can get ousted as a board member is if you miss two successive regular public meetings without an excuse and after a hearing, or if you commit a high crime under the Pennsylvania Constitution, which is not defined, by the way, and the district attorney of Berks County decides to remove you as a board member. Those are the only ways that we could say goodbye. Now, obviously, if somebody's clearances are otherwise unacceptable, we could use the power of being public and say, and expose that particular information, but if somebody wants to be intransigent on the part of the board, they can remain on the board, and we can't do anything about it.
Mr. Zawada?
I would say, I mean, it goes back to kind of like common sense. I realize we can't remove somebody, but isn't it like we would want to know the devil that we're dealing with? You know, there is other information that they could...
It's a position of love, somebody's saying.
I say that earlier, too. I'm going all over.
Okay. I just... I thought I heard that a little while ago.
You know, again, it's not in our bylaws or whatever, you know, to remove somebody, but again, we're talking about kids.
It wouldn't be information that all of you would get to know about one another or about your fellow on-board members. These documents would sit with our HR department, where all of our other clearances do, but they wouldn't be documents that are shared with you. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sultanic, I believe that it's kind of like, where do they really belong because you're not in...
It's not personnel. You're not an employee of this organization.
But we know that if we collect them, we definitely cannot share them with each of you, so we would only be the ones, and then who would we tell? Poor Mr. Sultanic would have to hear more.
Well, actually, we could theoretically share that information if we had that, because... But, you know, the question is, what does the board want to do with that?
Ms. Dieroff has a question. Can't we make a mandate for that, a policy for that, that you have to be able to pass the clearance, like we do other things? We can't do that?
Well, you can adopt it, but you can't do anything about it. A board member is an elected official. They do not report to the board. They report to the community technically. So that's why I started by saying, we can't do anything about it. Obviously, if there is a high crime, we can report that to the district attorney, and the district attorney can elect to do something. But if it isn't, if it is simply a misdemeanor conviction that occurred last week or 20 years ago, and it comes up on the report, that may be an object of discussion or interest on the part of the board, but we can't do anything about it.
Okay.
You can pass a policy, but I'm just saying, what's the enforceability of that policy?
All right, thank you.
Ms. Torsh, do you think we should take a consensus again on that policy to see if that's something that we would want to just remain? Instead, we don't want you to go to the first reading, and then we have this discussion again.
We can certainly keep that on, but then again, I guess the question would be, how do you enforce and make a board member completed and submit it if you... And what would be... There wouldn't be a penalty for not. So it's, you know, we... You can certainly keep it there. I don't... I'm not opposed to it. So if you want to keep it there, give me a thumbs up, and I'll keep it on there.
Well, please ask a question.
Okay.
I think Mr. Updegrove has a question.
So you said, are we the only district that you know of that does this? Is that correct?
That's what was shared.
That's what was shared with me.
Yes. This is the only district that I'm aware of. It did come up once in another district about 20 years ago. It did come up once in another district about 20 years ago in the region. But this is the only district that I know that has this kind of provision. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but I do have contact with a lot of districts. And Boyer Town has always been special.
Thank you.
In other words, it really don't have any teeth to it.
You said it very succinctly.
As I remember, some are, they're good for three years or five years.
Under normal situation, if you're an employee of the school district, they're good for five years as long as you have continuous service in the same, you know, place of employment.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's going to be tough to, if you have multiple terms, it's going to be tough to police, especially since we're in and out of.
Well, if somebody says, I'm not going to do it, that's where that's, you know, if you have this requirement, I get elected to the board and said, I'm not going to do it. What are you going to do to me?
Go ahead. And again, I'm new at it, but let's just say for our mistake, because we had talked that a lot of times, board members will go to the prom. Now, that's a school function.
You're not alone.
Okay, so wouldn't we have to have a background check to go, to be involved with the students?
No, you would not. The only time that you would have to have those clearances, criminal history, FBI, is if you were chaperoning, you were being left alone with a student. If you were escorting a student on their own, if you were working outside of the classroom where you were not being able to be observed, you would need that type of clearance. But when you're just attending the prom or school show and you're there to just kind of visit and there's lots of other adults from, you know, the school district, you're fine. You're not being left alone.
You would still need a volunteer form, I believe, though.
Not even for the prom, because you're being invited as a guest.
So I guess my question here is, what's the purpose of the requirement? At this point, I don't see any, because it's a requirement that nobody else has that is unenforceable, and there's no, there's no challenge to it. So why do we have it?
Yeah, what I wanted to say was, when you're applying or you're thinking about running, you're looking at that on the website and possibly someone, and I wouldn't know that didn't have any teeth to it when I saw it there. Possibly they put it on before just as, hey, listen, you're going to have to get this, you know, your background checks. So maybe you better not run if it's going to come up bad or something. Maybe that's why it's been there. It might not have any teeth, but that might be why it's there.
To be honest with you, Mrs. Scott, it was placed on there about two, three years ago. It was not there prior to that.
So just one more comment. I just, so I, you know, have children in the school. So when I was volunteering in the classroom with a teacher, I didn't need clearances. But when I started doing small group readings outside of the classrooms with second graders, then I did need them. So that's, yeah, because it's, it can be confusing, fair enough. The other thing is, yeah, I agree, I think there just is no teeth. This is not enforceable. But Mr. Pennarello makes a really great point in that you would think we would want people to have these things. So I think a better use of our time is if we were reaching out to the people who create the laws around, you know, the parameters of what a school board member needs to do or needs to have in order to run. Because unfortunately, we just, yeah, this doesn't, there doesn't seem to be any point in.
All right, just give a quick thumbs up just to confirm that we're ready.
For what, what's the point of?
Thumbs up to remove it as presented.
To remove it?
To keep, the way that I'm presenting, so you want, you want?
It's fine, keep it. Do what you got to do.
All right, hold on, hold on. No, no.
Yes.
If it means nothing, then it's useless.
All right, let's reclarify. We're going to remove the need for clearances as Ms. Torsh just presented.
To remove?
To remove.
Okay, so the yes means to change what the current language is.
Correct. Thumbs up to change it. Okay, I think that, I think you're good, Ms. Torsh.
Do we?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do we, okay, do we count, do we have to go four or whatever?
I believe so. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, thank you.
That completes my policy presentation. You will see these policies moving to first reading at the next board meeting.
Okay, are you still up?
I am still up. All right, under the superintendent's consent agenda, tonight, we will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the following overnight trips. And we have the, trip is for 300 BASH class of 2023 students to travel to Orlando, Florida on March 17 through 11, 2023. The juniors should be doing a celebration. This will be the first that the students will be returning back to Disney for their class trip. Students will learn how to budget their money, travel by bus, plane on their own, as well as navigate the parks and gain independence. So that is the one trip. The next trip is for Boyertown Area Senior High School, Middle School East, Middle School West, youth and government students to travel to Harrisburg to the State Capitol Building on April 21 to 24 of this year, 2022. The students will simulate the state legislative and judicial process through writing, debating, and voting on self-created bills or writing a legal brief and presenting oral arguments in court. And if you haven't ever followed this group to Harrisburg, it is an awesome experience to watch our students, you know, fill the shoes of many different government officials. One year, our, one student was the governor, and the governor did happen to come out of his office and did take a, had a photo op with our students. So it was quite exciting for that individual student. So we'll be looking for approval of that trip and for nine Boyertown Area Senior High School N J R O T students to travel to the Naval Station Newport, Rhode Island. So I am looking for the district, the School Board of Directors to approve the following trips.
Hogan's second.
Okay, Ms. Nyman, and I believe I heard Ms. Hogan was the second. Correct your vote.
Oh, excuse me, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dieroff.
We used to get a list of how much we cost, it cost us as a district. I don't see any of those expenses.
The expenses are here. It doesn't have the breakdown as far as what monies are from the district and opposed to the student. But the trip to Disney is funded by the students. I stand corrected. Amount paid by student organization is here as part of the information that's presented, Mrs. Dieroff. So for.
Yeah, I see that, but we used to get a breakdown of what it costs the school district. And we're getting.
Right. So right now, for information, the Middle School East, Middle School West students that are going, there is non, the non-district expenses, there's no district expensive, expenses. The amount for the students overnight is going to be paid by the pupil and the amount paid by student organization for transportation, meals, registration, and housing. So the student, youth, and government trip is not impacting the district. Are you seeing those numbers that I'm speaking to right now?
Oh, yes, yes, I know they're all there.
Okay.
I was used to seeing the other numbers also.
Okay, well, we'll make sure, I know that Mrs. Kramer does receive that, and we'll make sure that we provide that to you.
Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Okay, now we can go to a vote.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes, and if our students do a better job than our government, they should stay there.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And next, I'm going to be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
I have a first from Ms. Nyman and a second from Mr. Updegrove. Questions, comments?
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yep, yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Pennarello?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I personally would like to welcome Mr. Scott Scheel as our new Director of Facilities. And Scott's sitting in the audience, so welcome aboard. Scott's been doing a great job in the past two months filling this position as he is also filling his current, his other role as the assistant. So welcome and congratulations. That completes the superintendent's report. But before we move on to the committee liaison reports, I would just like to bring to attention and recognize someone who has been working behind the scenes for many years. This year, Boyertown had voted for Mr. Ross Smith to be the 68th Mentor of the Year. And just to give a little bit of background information about Ross, he's a true mentor and role model for today's athletic youth. Ross Smith has been involved with Boyertown Sports since he was in high school. He, as a quiet force in the sports program, Smith has always silently, silently worked on the sidelines and has never asked for recognition. But his contribution in Boyertown Sports is something that deserves acknowledgement. Fondly known as squigs, Smith has been a constant in the Boyertown Area School District baseball program for 39 years, starting as equipment manager and moving up to the P A announcer and statistician. For the last five years, he has served as the scorekeeper for the Boyertown Midget Baseball League, scoring for the A U, 9 U, 10 U, 11 U, and 12 U travel teams, which also documents playing time and other responsibilities. He also volunteered with the American Legion Post 471 Boyertown Baseball Program for 21 years. He held the position of President of the Organization for five. His positions there also included equipment manager, P A announcer, scorekeeper, and he has been the head scorekeeper for Boyertown Legion Baseball, scored at the state tournament for the last seven years. In addition, in being involved with Boyertown Baseball Program, Smith also held various positions in the Berks County American Legion Baseball League. He's been President, Secretary, and currently serving as the league's Vice President. He's been the statistician for the Boyertown Area Senior High Football Program for the last 32 years and oversees the maintenance of the team's website and social media accounts. In the last year, he completed the conversion of the Football Game Day program to an all-digital format. Smith is a founding member of the Boyertown Area Football Association, 2005, four, and an organization that supports the football program by raising money for equipment, technology, things that are not already covered by our district or parent's organization. He has been involved with Boyertown Area Senior High School Basketball Program for 20 years as a scorekeeper. And for the last 10 years, covering events when needed, including jobs ranging from ticket taking to timekeeping. This requires flexibility and was all done while also maintaining the district's presence on social media. So as you can see, Mr. Ross Smith has been doing a whole lot behind the scenes, really supporting our sports programs. He's often the one who is giving the shout-outs to our students, tweeting and, you know, putting out notices. And so I just felt that, you know, it would be nice to pay back to Mr. Ross and give him a shout-out since I don't tweet. So congratulations to Ross Smith and, you know, his dedication to Boyertown Sports. So just wanted to give a bit of a shout-out for one of our members. So, thank you. That really completes my everything.
All right, let's check in with our committee liaison reports. Start off with the B C I U, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. No report tonight. I do have a meeting coming up on the 17th, and I'll fill you guys in after then. Thanks.
B C T C, last week, I was my first board member attendance meeting there. Got to lay the land, it was in Fleetwood. Mr. Updegrove, that is a heck of a drive. But it's a beautiful facility and, you know, it's an honor to be representing this board up there. So we had a great meeting. I'm looking forward to many more.
Lee's Port?
Lee.
Longport?
No.
Lee's Port?
Lee's Port, yeah. What did I say? Fleetwood, no, Lee's Port. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It was so far, I got lost.
Another half hour drive.
Yeah, no, but a beautiful facility. I'm looking forward to getting a lay of the land up there. So it was a wonderful experience, and I look forward to many more meetings. Let's check in, again, with the curriculum and student services.
Yeah, we have a meeting at the end of the month scheduled. There has been some things that have come up that, this will be a good meeting that basically both of us can try to understand each side and get through this. But it's going very well, and I think we're going to be able to accomplish a lot of stuff. Thanks.
Ms. Dieroff, anything with facilities?
No, I'm getting really anxious to work with our new facilities person. And also, we're still talking about Pine Forge, so that's coming along too. And we'll be making a presentation soon. Thank you.
Mr. Brophy, anything on finance? I know we had an introductory presentation, but anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, well, you saw tonight, the first part of it, as we move through the finance presentations, the challenges. There'll be a lot of them coming up between this year, next year, and going forward. So I look forward to seeing, you know, getting involved and seeing more of the finance going forward, how we're going to manage our costs. And what we're going to be looking for is increasing our revenue.
Okay, and on policy, Ms. Torsh, whenever the policies for, that will be introduced for our first reading.
Mr. Hemingway, I do want to let the board know that I am working with our Berks Career and Technology Center in Ole, our east campus. They are setting up a tour for us.
Not Fleetwood?
Not Fleetwood. And so that will be in the newsletter coming up, that there will be an opportunity to tour that facility. It will be during a school day, unfortunately, for those who are working, because that was the time that they had available. So we, I am also working with them to try to put onto their calendar for the following year, a night for us to have a meeting, a tour, and I believe dinner comes with that. So I am working for a meeting for 2023 with them, so.
Okay, let's move on to board comments. Let's, we'll go, we'll go around this way and start with Mr. Brophy.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Pennanaro?
I want to congratulate Ross and Joseph Conick on being the new head football coach.
Jeff?
Real quick, Ms. Torsh, are, we plan on, I'm hoping we're going to schedule yet another time where we can go to visit the schools. Okay, I want to thank Ms. Tenacola for all your hard work, and I really appreciate that you're on our team. I've run a lot of businesses and numbers are not always fun, especially when you're dealing with abstract numbers. I want to give out a shout to Mrs. Dieroff again. She did a heck of a job with numbers for setting up our census. And I'm thankful that we only have to do this once every 10 years, because if we had to do it every year, it'd be a pain. And I just want to give one other thing for us to all remember about Ukraine, that the people that are fighting over there for their freedom is just inspiring. And we all should get that same feeling. So, but yes, that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Ms. Dieroff?
Again, I want to welcome Mr. Scheel and set up an appointment right away to get some things done. I also want to thank Mrs. Tenacola for the wonderful job she did again on the finances. And I look forward to seeing where we could cut whatever without affecting any of the programs we have. So it's not such a burden on the taxpayers. With the price of gas and heating oil and everything else right now, they certainly don't need that on top of it. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, I want to thank Mrs. Tenacola. She has been a big help, and I appreciate all her time. I know it's hard to work with numbers, and it can really frustrate you. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the team that did the census. I know that wasn't easy, especially Ruth. Thank you. Ruth, thank you, and, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hemingway. Yeah, so I just wanted to welcome Mr. Shield, and congratulate Mr. Smith on his Mentor of the Year, and thank him for all of his support to our sports programs, those programs are so important to so many students in the district, so I really do personally appreciate all the work that goes into that, I know it's quite a lot. I had a football player, and it was a lot of work on my end, so I'm sure what he's doing is a lot. And then I just wanted to wish all the ladies Happy International Women's Day, and say thank you to everyone who's working so hard in the community to make it a better place, and that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Basically, oh, first of all, I want to thank Addy for that, that was great. The other thing is, are, are we aware about a phone system, a underground fiber optic phone system that's being presented from the district? We're not moving into a fiber optic system?
Mr. Stout, is there a secret I'm not aware of, or?
I'm sure there are. I'm sure there's many. Okay, I'm sure there, I'm sure there's many.
It was a couple of board meetings ago, I believe there was an approval to move forward with new networking lines with respect to our buildings and having the capacity for sustainability within our buildings. That was all part of the E-rate process that had gone through, I want to say maybe that was about a month ago, but it's, we are in desperate need of upgrading some of the, the systems within our buildings and the networking between them. We've had a couple breakdowns because of the inconsistencies with our lines, so we are working on that, but it's, it was out there, I want to say, like about a month ago, month and a half ago, I don't remember the specific meeting, that it was on the agenda.
Underground? They're putting it underground, from all the different school districts, one to another, underground?
I don't, I don't know the, the means of what that will be.
You never got a cost factor for that?
It was all part of the E, the E-rate presentation that was done back at that particular time.
Okay. Mr. Tencola, do you recall, I, I don't think that, you might be talking about two separate things of what we are presenting?
We did present the WAM, which, everything is all inclusive in that, there's no additional costs beyond what was in that agreement that was approved, and that was put out, so we'd get E-rate reimbursement as well on those costs.
And for bid, it was put out for bid.
Sounds expensive to me, very. That's it.
Okay, thank everybody that's doing their job and going above and beyond, but, can you tell us the numbers of our students on our COVID cases? Where are we at on that?
We have been below, I think, there might have been three yesterday, without going to the website, there are, they're, they're minimal. We're not seeing. So we're doing very well? We are doing very well, the number, I've been reporting to you what the numbers have been as far as our local numbers, and I can quickly bring something up to reference our district numbers, so, let's see, as of last week's numbers in district, we had a total of eight student cases and one staff case, that was for the entire week ending March 4th.
So we're doing very, very well that we lent mask optional, that's fantastic, that's very, very good news. As a board member, I do work during the day, so the ad hoc committee meetings were during the day, I could not attend, and normally I do attend these functions. As Mrs. Torch has said, they're doing Berks Career Tech, which is going to be during the day, which is something else I won't be able to attend, so I'm asking very nicely to please do the stuff at night when we can attend. Since I do basically attend everything, I cannot always get off work, we're very short-staffed at my place, just like everybody else, and be considerate of that and make sure things at night. Thank you.
All right, I just have to, I have to reply to that, none of us are on this board out of convenience, this is a volunteer position, we make our sacrifices, I attended all the head-up committee meetings, sure, I take off work, we all had to take off work, and he wasn't, anyone who's there was in attendance. I know that we do take the time to try to have activities in the evening, but, you know, if it's important enough, we find a way. I don't have any other comments, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank Mr. Brophy, second from Mr. Updugrove.